Before we get started, I just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and hopefully a good year coming up. And thank you for all the support that you've given us, you know, in 2019 and looking forward to a good year. So with that, would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Donato, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Donato?
Here.
Goodall?
Here.
Grago?
Here.
Lopez?
Here.
Matei?
Here.
Miles?
Here.
Rico?
Here. Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
Call vote?
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Uh, Paul Shad, let's see, Paul Shad, do you have anything? Paul Shad, are there staff reports? None? Okay. Tom Murphy?
It's only fitting that Mr. Murphy should speak on this occasion.
Tom Murphy, Tom Murphy General, Turner Times TV. Since this is a meeting, I just want you to know, I'm six and a half years clean and sober of being a print journalist. This is a meeting. I do miss it at times, but um, I uh, I blame all of you. Last Thursday, I went to bed and I had to get up early to teach yoga. And I sort of, I started clicking off what I need to do Friday, what I need to do Saturday, what I need Sunday, get to Monday and then Tuesday. It's like county commission meeting and counseling. And then my brain kicked in because it's like, oh, last meeting of the year, last meeting of the decade, last meeting for several people except for the, you know, meeting in January. But really, this is the last meeting. Off to the races. I got maybe an hour or two asleep because I just started thinking about a lot of things in history. And I just wanted to reflect on that tonight because I've been here a long time and there's only a few people that have been here longer. One of them's sitting on the end over there. Um, I was thinking of the movie Platoon, you know, in the beginning, people get off and they're fresh and, you know, Charlie Sheen is in the movie. And they get off the plane and they're fresh and they're dressed and they're ready to go in the middle. There's all the battles and in the end, they're helicoptering out. Some of you are leaving soon, only you're not leaving in body bags. You've served your time in a time when things were really, really difficult here. And we've gotten through that and you reflect back now to where we are and all the good things that are happening and it just, it makes my heart swell to go, wow. Um, and I see some of the things that you guys have done here. Um, and a couple of key things that I think about, um, one was when Joey Yorda sat where Mayor Reek was and said, find us revenue because we're in a crisis financially. And I knew what that meant, you know, it was when marijuana was coming around and, and with less downs of the attorney and the staff that we have, they made it happen. And I, I've told this to less myself, I believe if we'd had someone else as an attorney, not naming names, they could have argued against this just as strongly and convinced Councilman to do this. And, and I think he and the staff are responsible for the condition where we're at, where we are today. And I understand not everybody agreed on it. That's, that's okay, but it, it turned out that we did. The other big thing too, that I reflect on is Anthony. I mean, if anybody epitomizes forty years of law enforcement of rationalizing that, you know, we should do this and, and the way you spoke about it, it really, you know, it sticks, you know, because it was, I think it was a game changer. I mean, for you to say, hey, I, I've enforced the law against this for a long time. And, and that was profound. Um, as some of you are leaving, Michelle, um, when it comes to ARPA, I filmed some of the first meetings and when I first showed up, uh, they didn't want to let me in. My attorney, they had that, I had to call Harry Serran and I said, Harry, they don't want to let me speak or they don't want to let me film. And he said, tell them that they are legally constituted.
They just let them vote on the whole.
Well, this is, this is long before you were there.
Oh.
No, no, this is long, long before you got there. But, but it was the fact that I could call Harry on the phone and say, Harry, you know, what do I do? He says, Tom, they're legally, I, I, less than trained, they're legally constituted, blah, blah, blah. Harry said, you tell them that. And I went in there and told him that and they had to let me film. The point, the point is about, I know that you're leaving, the point is that in my observation all this time, when there's a really difficult financial issue or whatever, we all know you're the smart kid in the room. So you're gonna be missed. Um, and, and I just appreciated what you and Anthony did when you came in and everything was happening, you know, and, and now we have the new team. Now Rusty and, and Karen and, you know, are the grizzled veterans. So you've got the new ones coming in, you know, and, and you're the leaders now and it wasn't that long ago that you guys were the rookies. So all changes. Carlos, you're moving on to bigger and better things, but um, your replacement is somebody who has served before, you know, so it's kind of like, you're just subbing out for, I can't think of his name right off the top of my head.
Frank.
Frank Schu. So it's, we're trading one for the other and then we got two rookies. So that, that's my observation. And so I just want to say thank you guys. Mr. Donato, you and I through the years have not always agreed, but you have, I think, are the one of the longest tenured people here and I respect that. And the thing that I have the most respect for is you turn on the TV and you look at the politicians with all the things that are going on and what they said last year or the year before or twenty years ago, they completely flip. The thing that I have the most respect for is that you've stood your ground. You've not wavered and that's commendable. You've stood on your principles and, and you've been isolated at times, at times you're in the majority too. Um, so to, to volunteer to run for office and serve for as long as you have, I mean, kudos. Um, you're a man of principle and, and just because we don't always agree doesn't mean that I don't respect or like you. And, and, and um, so thank you for all that time. Um, you got one more meeting, but I wanted to speak before that time. I think the future's bright. Um, and with Phil as mayor now, um, in the things that have happened in, in recent history when we're gone, there's not a feeling of dread. Um, I mean, that, when you got on the show, you know financially it was, what are we gonna do to make this happen? So, and Anthony, so it's just, I view myself now as not only a recovering print journalist, but I'm over here as a media journalist, but I, I see now what I do as more as I'm a historian too, because what I have, I have all the tapes and it's history. How cool would it be to go back, you know, and watch what they did a hundred years ago? Well, they're gonna be able to do that in a hundred years. They'll be able to watch, analyze it, you know, dissect it, maybe somebody will write a master's thesis on it, who knows? But the, the future's bright with what Jay Shimino's done, Dana Crawford, The Peak, Phil, I mean, it, it just looks bright. And um, I'm gonna be sitting here until they will me out of here. So um, maybe in four years, Mr. Donato, you'll be back. So, you know, give that back in shape if you don't know, so.
Mr. Yorda said, I'll be back.
You never know. Anyways, that, that's all I have to say. There's um, gonna be some changes soon with the funeral home. We're um, we're making a few changes. We're still gonna do funerals, we're still gonna do videos, but I got a couple other things that we're gonna be doing that are gonna help enhance the community, so I'm looking forward to that. But again, I couldn't sleep because of all of you and, and I just want to say really thank you. There were times I come up here and I was like, oh God, here comes Murphy, what's he gonna do now? I don't get that anymore. So, but from the bottom of my heart, guys, and Joe, God bless you for all that you've done and served, so.
Appreciate that. Happy birthday.
You bet, guys.
Thank you, Tom, for your insight. I know you've come a long way with us. Looking forward to working with you, you and me. And thank you for your tireless efforts of making this a more transparent place.
Yes, sir.
And internet access meant all the difference in the world, so thank you.
And it makes you feel any better, we can't sleep thinking about you.
I've got a, I have a letter here that was dated December the fifth. Dear City Council, a week before Thanksgiving, the owner of fifteen oh five H Street placed two eight foot wide by nine and a half foot tall, forty foot long shipping containers end to end that fell out to Jackson Street. I and other property owners complained about the immediate negative impact on the neighborhood. Fortunately, the city manager and the building inspector were aware of the situation and addressed it immediately. As president, I believe that the owner has submitted a proposal to the city able to allow him to keep these inappropriate containers in our residential neighborhood. Indeed, he has indicated to me that he intends to add one or two more containers in the future. I wish to express my absolute opposition to these industrial containers based on the negative impact on the neighborhood and on the property values of nearby homes. I submit that if I put my home for sale today, that about fifty percent of potential buyers will turn around after seeing the gigantic, ugly metal boxes sitting in the neighborhood. Please drive by and see for yourself. I ask you to support me, my neighborhood and the future of Trinidad by preventing the placement of these industrial containers in residential neighborhoods. Thank you very much. Larry Parkage on fifteen oh five B Street. With that, onto item five, consent and general approval. Item A, approval of the meeting minutes of December the third, twenty nineteen and special meeting minutes of December the ninth, twenty nineteen. Approval of the bills for one minute, five hundred thirty-two thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. Item C, approval of payroll, December the fourteenth, twenty nineteen to December the twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, to two hundred, three hundred forty thousand, a hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-two cents. You have a motion, please?
Second?
Second. The only thing I wanted to check with on something is, under Ms. Ling's business, the construction company that got that, is it Pate or Pete?
Pate.
P-A-T-E with a water line?
Okay, it is.
Call vote, please?
Donato?
Uh, yes, but staying on December the nineteenth meeting, I wasn't here. I'm December the nineteenth, excuse me.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item six, public hearings, six A, new hotel and restaurant liquor license application filed by Trinidad Smokehouse LLC at two twenty-five West Main Street by Mr. Teddy Wilson and Mr. Brian Mayne. Hearing is now open. You want to square again? Gotta make it legal, David.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're on.
John, good evening. Teddy Wilson and Brian Mayne, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, gentlemen, you are the two who make up Trinidad Smokehouse LLC?
Yes.
Which is the name of the applicant for this proposed liquor license, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're clear, this is for the business that is going to be in place at what was Blackjack's, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and that's two twenty-five West Main Street?
Yes.
In Trinidad. Um, and could you tell council, please, you, um, the, the name, the LLC is Trinidad Smokehouse, that is also going to be the trade name, is that correct? Okay, and while I'm on the subject of names, the Landward LLC is Redneck Smoke, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that, that is a corporation that is owned by you, Mr. Wilson? Or you own that one as well, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah.
Okay, and so you're, you're the two principals in both LLCs, yes?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so do you own any other liquor licenses currently in the city of Trinidad?
Yes, we do.
And where is that and how long have you owned that?
Five hundred. That's at the Trinidad Smokehouse, five hundred East now.
Okay.
And right now, we own that liquor license.
And what is the name of that business?
It's Trinidad Smokehouse.
How long has that been in business?
Since first year.
Okay, but you, you have one of the liquor licenses in the city of Trinidad, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you know the, the Trinidad liquor laws in the state of Colorado, is that fair to say? Okay, so when, when are you hoping, hoping to open this restaurant, the Trinidad Smokehouse?
We're looking at first year, but then I'll move back a little bit. Possibly in the end of February.
Okay, so you don't have your certificate of occupancy yet, is that correct? Okay, um, you, so the two of you are the two owners of Trinidad Smokehouse, correct?
Yeah.
And that is a limited liability corporation, Colorado limited liability corporation formed I believe in August of two thousand nineteen?
Yes.
Okay, and it's fifty percent, fifty percent, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, um, would you tell us, if you would, please, you, you have reflected in the documents both the lease agreement, but also a financial interest. That is, you have a loan from the Colorado Enterprise Fund, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I don't need to talk about the dollar amount, but are there any other financial interests in your business other than your own capital contributions?
The bank owns, well, the bank has a mortgage on.
So the, the bank has a mortgage on the premises?
Yes.
Is the mortgage in your name personally or is the mortgage in the name of the, of Redneck Smoke?
It's in my name, so we can keep the loans personal.
Okay, and I know you have a tremendous amount of financial documents in your, your application, but I should ask you, have you reviewed the application before tonight's hearing?
No.
Okay, it's, all right, you've, you've done all the submissions, is that correct?
Yes.
And it's, everything that you've submitted is correct to the desk of your information with the leave?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you, your other liquor license, is that a hotel, restaurant liquor license?
Yes.
So you understand the food requirements that are required with that kind of liquor license?
Yes.
Okay, and this is going to be a restaurant, is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, do you want to take a minute to explain, I mean, like, we've all been to many restaurants before, but is there anything that's going to be different about this establishment or what you're going to be doing?
It's kind of a, I've got an upgrade of what we're doing now. Basically, we're gonna add in more high-end products like steaks and seafood. And then maybe in the future, possibly Airbnb or some, utilize the upstairs of some sort. That's about the only difference.
But not now, I mean, you're not gonna be using upstairs?
No, not right now.
Okay, and you've been working very hard on the, the redoing or retrofitting of the buildings, is that fair to say?
Yeah, every day. Every single day.
And is it fair to say you've sunk a lot of money into this? Not like that's really, really relevant to your liquor license application, but you put a lot of money into this, this business?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and also, so you are the business that is running the business and you are going to be renting from a company that you both own, correct? But you have a mortgage in, in that company's name, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, so you, I, I want to ask you, um, Mr. Mayne, in the background checks and the criminal histories, as I've told you in a phone conversation today, you have an entry from two thousand and fifteen, sorry for having to air this publicly.
Totally fine, yeah.
Okay, but an entry for third degree assault and domestic violence. Will you please explain to council what the disposition of that case was?
Basically, I wasn't charged for anything. It was a misunderstanding and really I don't understand why I was arrested, so, but I know that everything was cleared and I wasn't prosecuted for anything.
Is it correct that charges were not filed? I thought I heard you say that. One charge is filed?
I was, I was arrested, but everything was dropped, so I don't know what that means, but yeah.
Okay.
Everything was dropped completely and basically that was, that was it.
Okay, and no convictions?
No conviction, nothing.
And otherwise, you both have clean criminal histories, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Wilson, I know that you, um, you circulated the petition with respect to this. Did you help with that also, Mr. Mayne?
Yes.
Okay, so you both did the, the petition circulating for citizen signatures in support or opposition of a liquor license?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, do you know how many signatures you obtained?
I just built it on the floor, so you know who's there.
And, and does sixty sound about right?
Yeah.
But all of the people that you, whose, whose signatures you obtained, they were all in favor of your, your petition, your application? No dissenters? Go ahead.
We had quite a bit of people that were sad they couldn't sign in.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I, I should say, okay, I believe eleven signatures were stricken, but that frequently happens. People say they live in the city of Trinidad and they go or they're not registered to vote, so I believe there are forty-nine valid signatures for people in the city of Trinidad. So how many employees are you, you hoping to have if you're up and running and you're given a liquor license by city council? How many employees do you hope to have?
Right now, we have roughly nineteen. So I'd say we probably had, of course, ten.
Okay, ten at this location?
Ten more.
Ten more, okay. So anyone who is going to be handling or serving alcohol, they will be tips certified? Is that a policy you have that you're existing, established? Okay, so that they know everything that they have to do, alcohol related. You understand that it's a violation of your liquor license if you sell to an intoxicated person, you sell to somebody who's not of age, all those kinds of things, I don't know, it could result in revocation of your liquor license, that also could result in illegal liability, you understand that? Okay, um, gentlemen, I'm about done. Is there anything you would like to say to council before I turn it over?
No, I'm just pretty excited if we are granted this, that when you guys come out and join us, we, Mother Neff, I mean, we've got a better location and.
But then what can you just?
Yeah, it's, we have parking, which is nice and the development that's happened across the street, it's just a win-win for us, you know, so answered.
With the new plans with the booze fest, I think the timing's really good for y'all too. You gonna do prime rib?
Yep.
Good.
We actually just did that for a Christmas party recently.
Just wanted to check and make sure before I vote.
Donato, you have any questions? I think, I think the rest already put in his list, I guess I think you're okay. Yeah, just curious, what is the Colorado Enterprise Fund?
So that's basically just, it's government funding?
Part of the SBA.
Yeah, SBA.
Okay.
So they just, they help our small businesses, our cars.
Okay, and I guess on the August eleventh thing, that's all been settled, no further repercussions or anything?
I just, I didn't even know if it was still on there, to be honest with you. I know there's ways of getting it off.
Yeah, yeah, I told you.
Okay, let's hold it up.
Are you planning on closing your other establishment once this is up and running?
Yes, we are. Just so that we're not spread too thin and we can concentrate on a new building. Um, I think it has more to offer, so that's why we wanted to do it.
Just a comment, because we're customers down at the Smokehouse. And the first night we met down there, my husband conveniently left his wallet at home because I paid all the taxes. But anyway, they would not sell to him without his license.
See, we made that our number one policy.
I have never been in a.
Same thing happened to me.
Because I, I figured the dispensaries are doing it anyway and ninety percent is our clientele, so I figured, why don't we ID, you know, set an example, so. And it's working, I mean, of course, some of our writers get a little upset. What?
Can I just comment on that?
Sure.
That's not the law.
I know it's not the law.
If someone clearly doesn't look twenty years old, and they'd.
It's just a personal policy and I figured it's, there's no problem with being extra secure, especially reading over the, the rules of having a liquor license.
Well, see, that explains it, because that doesn't look twenty.
Yeah. I told, I told my staff, I said, I don't care if it's your dad, your mom, your grandma, your cousin, I sit outside.
Well, they adhered to that. I do that.
What, I, I look a lot older than that, even they called me, I said, really? Look at me!
Yeah, sometimes I'll joke with you and try to make it.
And then they, it's, it's some kind of compliment about my youthful appearance.
Yeah. It just does me an extra secure.
No, and I appreciate that, thank you. I just wanted to say it's good to see that, that business reopening again and.
It's a beautiful place.
I did have a couple of questions that I saw, uh, you know, Robin Sykes, I guess, from the department, health department, there was some paperwork and final review, has that all been taken care of?
We're working on it.
Okay, good. And then the inspection, the, the building permit, I guess, hadn't been issued, hasn't been issued?
No, no.
We changed the hood out. In the kitchen, you know, had a, there's a little six by six one and we put a bigger hood in there to be able to be, you know, do a better, and.
Yeah, it's being fire wrapped and just kind of extra secure, just seemed like they didn't do that in the first place, so we wanted to make sure that we were safe for us.
Those are all questions, thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Okay. No, sorry, question for, question for you, actually.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to transfer any license or is that one going away, we're opening a new license?
The latter.
Okay. This is on there. All right. Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Anyone in the audience to speak for or against the application? Item six, A one, exempt. Motion for approval, or motion for new hotel, restaurant liquor license application filed by Trinidad Smokehouse LLC at two twenty-five West Main Street?
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call vote?
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Yes, findings? This matter came on for a hearing on the application of Trinidad Smokehouse LLC at two twenty-five West Main Street in Trinidad, Colorado, for a new hotel, restaurant license before the city council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, acting in its capacity as the local licensing authority on December seventeen, twenty nineteen, in the city council chambers at city hall. The city council having reviewed the application and supporting documents and reports by the city clerk and other city staff, petition submitted into evidence at the hearing and testimony taken during the hearing makes the following findings. One, the neighborhood consists of a, of that area located wholly within the city's corporate limits. Teddy Wilson and Brian Mayne testified in favor of granting the license and no persons testified, no other persons testified in favor of or in opposition to granting the license. The city clerk's report showed that there are forty liquor license outlets within the neighborhoods. Of these, there are five fermented malt, fermented malt beverage off-premise licenses, one fermented malt beverage on-premise license, one club license, thirteen hotel and restaurant licenses, seven liquor store licenses, seven tavern licenses, one arts license, three beer and wine licenses and two lodging and entertainment licenses. The applicant submitted a petition regarding the liquor license application. The petition contained total of sixty signatures, of which forty-nine were residents of a business or business owners and managers from within the neighborhood, twenty-one years of age or older, and they were in favor of the issuance of a liquor license at this location. No remonstrances were submitted. The applicant, through testimony and other evidence, gave prime faces showing that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by existing liquor outlets and that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor the issuance of a license. Based on the evidence presented at the hearing and investigative materials provided for the hearing, the city council finds that reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by the existing liquor establishments, that adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor the issuance of a liquor license to the applicant and that the applicant officers are of satisfactory moral character. Therefore, the city council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, as the local liquor licensing authority, hereby approves the application of Trinidad Smokehouse LLC at two twenty-five hereby approves the application of Trinidad Smokehouse LLC at two twenty-five West Main Street in Trinidad, Colorado. Okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, and looking forward to having a good state.
I just want to make one correction on Mr. Matei's reading there. It's no big deal, but when he opened the, opened his reading, he said, yeah, new hotel and restaurant license application, he forgot the liquor license.
My bad, apologies. Thanks for the catch.
If that makes any big deal, I don't know. I just.
You want me to read it again?
No.
Item six B, public hearing for consideration of minority, demanding the city Trinidad annual budget for fiscal year, beginning on one one twenty nineteen and ending on twelve thirty-one twenty nineteen. That adjustment was from fifty-one million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars, to fifty-one million, nine hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars. Hearing is now open. Cheryl, do you have anything else to present?
There are no changes.
There are no changes, okay. Any questions from council or the project? Okay, anyone in the audience to speak for or against the consideration of the ordinance? If none, hearings closed. Item six B one, second amendment ordinance, demanding the city of Trinidad's annual budget for fiscal year, beginning on one one twenty nineteen and ending on twelve thirty-one nineteen, for a change from fifty-one million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars, to fifty-one million, nine hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars. Could I have a motion, please? So, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a vote, please.
Benado.
Yeah.
Goodall.
Yes.
Rodrigo.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Matei.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. We have no, on item number seven, non-famous business. On to item eight, which is miscellaneous business. Eight A, consideration of approval of state's policy dated date thirteen twenty nineteen, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I do have quite a few items that I, I was, I read through that, and I'm not sure, do we have our coordinator here? I've got about ten items I wanted to talk to you about.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions? Proceed.
I have some of the questions, can I do that?
Go ahead, you can go first.
Yeah, uh, so I understand that you worked with the department heads very closely.
Yes.
The original item was passed in twenty fourteen, I was on council then.
Yes.
But it hadn't really been flushed out, Audrey kind of explained the history of it to me. But you worked very, very closely with staff in coming up with this.
Yes.
Were there any controversial items where they just said, oh, please don't make us do that, or?
No, I think everyone's on board, uh, for bettering the safety culture, and then getting the policies in effect on what job tasks that they do on the field, so. No, no retaliation or no, uh.
No retaliation, but I mean, was anyone groaning?
No, well, everyone's groaning on just change in general, but with change that comes with it, um, but yeah, no, I haven't seen anything going on.
That was the main question I had. I got one more question, if that's right.
Sure.
Will this help us save money on our workers' comp insurance?
Uh, when you look at it in the big picture and the safety program in a whole, um, if we're assessing job hazards and, um, policy procedures part of that as well, and then we're reviewing injuries, uh, through the workman comp claims and stuff, and once we limit those, uh, claims and the property damage.
So it's gonna be a secondary.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna take time for it to see that in premiums or insurance premiums and property premiums, but it's gonna hit that mark eventually.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, bear with me, I've got, you know, like ten items I wanted to ask you about.
Okay.
You as a coordinator, uh, will you be available at all hours to make sure that projects are running whenever there's issues?
Um, yes, and then I think, uh, I was gonna work with Mike on an on-call type of system, and when there's a big job, I'll, um, after hours, and I'll be called out and overlook that job, see if everything's safe, and if it isn't, uh, I do have the obligation, and then I can shut it down, so, yeah, I have the ability.
You know, I was wondering, is a requirement that, you know, when, let's say there's a service issue out there, like an emergency,
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that a supervisor is supposed to be at the project at least in the beginning, or.
Yes.
Checking the project throughout?
Yes, or a competent person, meaning that they have the experience and the educational background on safety, if they're doing trenching or any type of confined space work, um, if a competent person is there on site, then that could be a substitute of a supervisor.
Okay. You know, in the information, it talks about conduct of the employees, uh, there isn't anything in there about a supervisor's conduct. Now, is that conduct being handled through other, through another affidavit that the city has?
Um, it's just gonna go through the process of disciplinary actions when it comes to department heads managing supervisors and supervisors managing frontline employees. Um, say for instance, um, a supervisor isn't doing his due diligence, then it'd be up to the department head to take corrective actions on that supervisor. So it, it definitely goes on the same process as in the union, where it has, you know, three steps of a written verbal, you know, so on and so forth, so I think that's how it's gonna work in that type of process.
And Mike, is there adding something in there, you know, to it?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can, and once these are, you know, assessed and approved, um, we'll be able to do that, and then in the future, how everything's being updated to an online platform, it'll be a lot easier, and then the accessibility of the workers having it on a tablet form, we'll be able to review it right there, uh, anytime they need it.
It also mentions, uh, that, you know, when there, ever there's a, a service issue of any kind, or a job, uh, and there's, uh, you know, bad conditions that, uh, you know, you will probably shut down the job, but the big problem comes up. Whenever we have service issues, you know, when a, there's a water break, or like today, what happened, you know, and it's snowing and raining, how do you handle those situations whenever it's act, you know, that service is actually needed?
So you're just, uh, saying on a safety aspect of it, on when they're about to start the job, like if there was an outage, how, what's the process? Well, first, it has to go through training, and employees need to be trained on all safety policies and procedures, and that will be done, um, after the policies have been approved, have a full citywide orientation on the new safety policies. And then they've already been trained throughout the year on certain things that they do out on the job, so, um, you know, confined space, lockout, tagout, um, ladder safety, et cetera, chemical safety. Through that training, it makes them a competent person to assess these while they're out on the job, no matter if it's a, you know, on-call, uh, situation, or just a routine situation out in the field. Um, and then that's how they assess it, if a supervisor, uh, sees something that is not safe, he is the one that is supervising his employees, so he should be able to take that hazard out of the picture by maybe switching up, you know, a job task or a chemical, if they're using something hazardous, they just switch up the chemical and eliminate that hazard. And this is gonna be a full team effort and understanding throughout every single employee from management, department head, all the way down to the frontline employee, so I feel like once we get that straight, it's gonna be a second nature and the safety culture's gonna start changing, and it's gonna be assessed accordingly.
Well, I specifically would talk to about weather conditions.
Weather conditions?
Weather conditions was the, was the question that, that I, that I thought of, is how do you handle those weather conditions?
Okay, and then, uh, inside the policies procedures, there's a, a heat stress, uh, program. There's a cold prevention program in there as well, and, uh, what that's gonna do is gonna give the supervisors or employees the signs of seeing an employee going into heat stress or going into, uh, exhaustion through the cold weather, and if that's the case, then they should, uh, take a, you know, an hour break, warm up in the truck, or a thirty-minute break, warm, warm up in the truck, and even if it's a, a situation where times are this, and, um, I'd rather have that person save his hands, you know, preventing frostbite than, you know, gaining an hour on a situation.
Uh, the next item I have here is, you know, they talked about, uh, monitoring equipment or closed spaces. Do we have that equipment already, or is it something we have to purchase?
Um, I think the gas department has, uh, I, I think the gas department and the water department have, uh, air monitoring systems for confined spaces.
And the fire department.
And the fire department, yes, because they have, yeah, because they have, um, they have respirators and everything like that, yes.
Uh, the next item here is, you know, the lockout-tagout, and according to the information, it shows that only certain employees can do this. You know, coming from the private sector, uh, one thing that happens is that it should be up to a responsible employee, if they find a piece of equipment that was not working, that they have that responsibility to lock that tag with a tag or something. And I think that's real important at the employee, and we'll give you a good example. Uh, years ago, there was a job being here, done here in Trinidad, and the supervisor went up to this guy, and he was trying to operate a wheelbarrow, and, uh, he had a pool of concrete, he was pushing it with a flat tire. Well, what happened was, uh, he didn't actually physically take that wheelbarrow from the employee, and he continued on. The employee filed, uh, an injury. He got his injury taken care of, plus he was able, I'm not sure if he sued, but he got, you know, restitution for it. And the reason being is that the supervisor did not take that wheelbarrow from his hands and take it out of, and, and say, you can't use this anymore. So I just want to make sure that an employee has that opportunity to do that lockout-tagout at any time, for any piece of equipment that they have.
Through that lockout-tagout as well, if an employee, that's just part of the due diligence, if they see a piece of equipment not working properly, then they need to notify supervisor immediately, and then he can go through the process as well as locking out the equipment, if it's any type hydraulic or even gravity, um, that's gonna affect the employee going into something.
Yeah, it mentioned in, in the information that there are only certain employees to do the lockout-tagout.
Yes, yeah, and that's just under a competent person, if they have the training and everything underneath that person, then they can do it, yes.
Uh, the next thing was, uh, and I don't know, do we have any forklifts in the?
Yes, we have two of them, yes.
Okay, something that did not mention in there, that a forklift should not be, it should not be lift, or it should not be left unassisted in a raised position.
Yep.
And it should not be traveling in, in a raised position if possible, so they didn't, didn't say that, so that would be something.
Okay, okay.
The, uh, training for not only, I guess, forklifts, but other equipment that we have, are, do we have to have some actual training where each employee is given a certificate to operate cer- certain equipment?
Uh, yes, and the only one that I'm concerned mostly about is the forklift, because in any industry or company, they need to have that certification of be able to operate a forklift, if you don't have it, then you can't operate the forklift. Um, and I am working with Sersa, actually, um, I contacted one of their reps, and, uh, they actually teach that and they certify that, and I'm actually in the process of doing the trainings for just certain individuals that are gonna be operating the, the forklift, because it just limits, you know, the hassle of trying to, you know, train everyone, it's just, you, you don't need to train everyone on forklifts unless they're gonna be operating it. But, uh, yes, I already did the assessment on that, 'cause I talked to all the managers, and I know all the job operations throughout every department, and, uh, just the city garage, the water department, uh, a few, uh, handful of other employees will be doing the training.
Yeah, and I know that, you know, and then, and, cause it comes from the private sector, there used to be such a thing as called Train to Trainer, where he, you know, someone such as yourself could do the actual training for anybody that's operating it.
Yep.
Uh, talked about the MSDS sheets, that they need to be available at all times. But there are certain times, I know that MSDS sheets are, you know, lost or whatever. Uh, there are companies out there that, if there's an MSDS sheet missing, that you can call the company and get that information immediately, and I, I'm not sure if that's something that.
Yeah, I'm actually, uh, I'm covering that, you know, extensively right now, um, I just did a chemical training, actually, um, yesterday. Um, I went around to every department and I correlated what chemicals they have and what, uh, SDS sheets they're lacking, and we're getting them all updated, and then from now on, if they are familiar with the chemical, that they know they have the SDS sheet already on file, then they just waive it, and if not, and it's a new chemical, they automatically store, uh, store it, 'cause by law, the manufacturer has to provide a, an SDS sheet. And, uh, a good thing about, uh, the side docks and the tablets, which is gonna be kind of going forward through, um, hopefully mid-January, is they'll be available also on the tablets. So if a worker is out in the field and they're working with chlorine, um, and their eyes are burning and their skin's being irritated, they can go online to the forums, SDS, look at the SDS sheet, and it says that you can wear proper clothing and goggles and a respirator.
Uh, high voltage utility work, it talks about an observer that, that's needed, and something that I've seen with some of the electrical department, there, there's one guy on the job, and it says anybody that's over, uh, four or five feet in the air, that there should be an observer with them.
Yes.
And I just want to make sure that that's while taking care, 'cause I have seen some of our utility guys with one guy out there, you know, up high like that, working on, on a high voltage line, and that, that's only a protection for them.
Yeah, yeah, and then there's only one individual, and that's their service, uh, uh, guy that goes out and does, you know, lightbulb changes and, uh, secondary work. But, uh, another thing to correlate that is they have groundmen, they always have to have groundmen, especially if they're doing primary work, and then he can also be the observer to make sure that they're not getting to the minimum provisions of the lineup.
Uh, the last thing that I ca- talked to Mike about this is that, uh, you know, when these guys are out on the job and they've had to shut down a street, and what's happening is that they, you know, they have a flagger out there, and we have citizens that are, that are, you know, bypassing the flagger. And I've talked to Mike a little bit about what we can do with that to, to make sure that these employees can take a license plate down, turn it in, whatever has to happen, because, uh, we need these employees to not be, uh, hurt or killed by somebody just bypassing.
Shut the windshield.
Yeah.
Yeah, they definitely, they definitely need to get used, the citizens also need to get used to obeying, you know, proper, uh, traffic control signs and et cetera, but one thing that I would recommend, and I don't know what the process would be, and it's just speaking outside of my position, is maybe a situation where they have to notify us and get a traffic control, you know, maybe permit to where we know as a city what sections are actually being closed off, 'cause right now, I don't know how it works, but streets are just closed, and there's really not any type of acknowledgement with the public on what streets are gonna be closed, closed ahead of time, so that could help with that situation as well.
Anyway, those are the questions, thank you.
Okay.
You know, you were talking about being on-call and stuff like this.
Yes.
And you haven't talked to Mike about this yet, but, you know, sitting on this council so long as that, I remember the city employees, I just had, carried monitors with them all the time, and I know how much trouble that was for us for a couple of years, and I was just wondering, I don't wanna go jump back into the fire with you to get a monitor, plus, you know, being on-call, there has to be some kind of extra little kick in there of, of pay raises and stuff like that, so. I think we gotta watch, kind of watch what we do on that, Mike, because I don't wanna see us go back with, 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 with the city employees that we have going with, through the monitors, so be very careful if you wanna do something like that, I could see you doing it.
Yeah.
But be very careful how we handle that, because.
Yeah, yeah, and then one thing.
What trouble we have.
Yeah, and then one thing I would, uh, stress to Mike too, and then I would help develop this policy or whatever has to be to be able to do this, is if it's a, a big job where the whole crew needs to go out and work, then that's when I would be called out to assess this job, not on every single call out. You know, uh, that, that could be a lot of callouts, um, if you got, you know, called out for a, a down line, or, you know, a meter not working. Um, so, yeah, that would definitely be assessed in that as well, yeah, this is definitely not working yet, not said yet.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I don't have a question.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Okay.
When I first got on city council, the first time we did the cleanup around town, you had just started with the electric department, hadn't you?
Um, I've been with the city for five years now.
Well, that's.
And, yeah, I do remember, yes, yes. That cleanup, that wasn't my starting day, but yeah, I was in there for a while.
And you were expecting your first job.
Yep.
I remember that, but I, I just want you to know how impressed I am with the job that you've done.
Awesome, thank you, I appreciate that.
You're, you do a very good job, and, you know, for you to come up in the ranks like you have, it's very commendable.
Awesome, thank you, I really appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, keep up the work. Thank you, you guys have a good Christmas.
There's no other questions, call a vote, please.
Benado.
Yes.
Goodall.
Yes.
Rodrigo.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Matei.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item eight B, consideration of appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, Shannon Rogan, are you here?
Yep.
She is. And Chris Smith, you're here as well? Could I have a motion, please? Second?
Second.
Any questions for these two people? Yes.
Um, this is a question for Mr. Smith. Do you work on the Fox redevelopment project?
I do.
Okay. Now, do you have any economic interest in the Fox redevelopment, either compensation or equity interest?
I work directly with Urban Neighborhoods and Dana Crawford.
Okay, so you're being compensated.
I am.
Okay, uh, I guess I would ask you, would you plan to recuse yourself on granting historic preservation credits on those deals?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all I need to know, thank you very much. Any other questions? Do you have anything to add that you would like to add for getting on board?
It's one of the most historic cities I've ever seen in America, and I'd be honored to help preserve it.
Shannon?
I'm in one hundred percent agreeance, you know, I've lived here for several years, and it's exciting and neat to see, and, you know, as our city continues to grow, it would be really nice to preserve the things that make Trinidad so special.
Thank you for, you know, putting in that case. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Call a vote, please.
Benado.
Yes.
Goodall.
Yes.
Rodrigo.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Matei.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. I have nine council reports, Mr. Benado, start.
I just have a couple things I'd like to say, uh, last week, uh, I went to the little Christmas concert that was presented by School District Number One at the junior high auditorium, and, I mean, there was a lot of people there and stuff, but this gentleman came out, and he didn't introduce himself, he just came up to the podium there, and he start playing his flute and stuff like that, and I didn't know, I thought he was just a student. Well, after he played this Christmas song, he said he was Mr. Duran, the new band director at School District Number One. And, uh, we presented the concert, and with the sixth, uh, the sixth graders played first, and they, that's the ones that were just learning and trying to do things. That was all right. And the seventh and eighth grade students played, and they were tremendous. I mean, that, I was, I was actually in shock, I mean, I, I couldn't believe that these were seventh and eighth grade students that were playing in this concert. And then they had the whole band there, and they played, and, um, it was very, you know, this gentleman, I don't know him, I don't know him personally, just from what I've seen of him, this Mr. Duran, should be very proud of what he's done with our children in School District Number One. I mean, this man is, he reminded me of trying to be like Mr. Vanatelli was way back in the, what, what year was that, Adam?
It was a long time ago.
Long time ago that, that we produced a Trinidad High School band, so, uh, thank you. So, uh, thank you to Mr. Duran and all the School District Number One students that performed there. And, and I attended the autism party at the community center where Santa Claus came and most of our autistic children were there and the boards were there. We had a little cup, some cookies and some punch and some games for the kids and stuff. And, uh, I'd just like to say thank, thank you to the city of Trinidad, Mike and Audra, especially Marty up there and his helpers up there that do so much for our autistic group that gives us their little rest, you know, the place to eat and the place where we can have our parties. And every time my daughter has asked Marty for something, he's come through, Michael. He's very good and that we talk, talk to the employees. So, other than that, that's all I have to say. Just Merry Christmas and God bless you all.
So, I accompanied Phil over to Lahana for a meeting with the army and the people in that area. The main thing I took from that is amazing the distrust and the, I don't know else to put it, that they have in that area for the military. And how I don't, I don't understand. I was glad we were there to speak well for the army, but it's, you know, I'm not sure what needs to be done to improve that relationship or the distrust that's been created between the army and the people out east. But I hope that's something that can really be taken care of and, and we can work more with the military. I think they're a valuable asset to us down in this part of the state as, as well as, uh, Pinion Canyon. Last night I attended the meeting with the Parks and Rec Board. I guess the new dog park equipment is supposed to be delivered December thirty first. From what I understand, all the dogs are pretty excited about the new playground equipment for the, uh, being able to play with out at the parks, so. Yeah.
Yeah, don't do that.
So, we are gonna have a polar plunge this year, or it looks like we're gonna have a polar plunge at the lake. First time anything like this, the lake has ever approved anything like this. The Park and Rec Board has put in a lot of work on this. Um, working with the police department and, and Dan Duran out there, they've been participating up north in one that's going on. I'm excited to see one here and that's gonna be on February twenty ninth. Uh, we have run into a little bit of a hiccup there, so if anyone has any pull or can talk to the ambulance district who give a letter of intent for this. And that's the only holdup, the ambulance district is not responding back to get their letter of agreement to present in the packet to the state so this can happen. They won't return any phone calls or anything, so if anyone's got any pull with the ambulance district or Mr. Oney?
Monahan.
Monahan? I knew I was close, but I put it on there. If they could, um, talk to him and see if he'd be willing to get that letter to the Parks and Rec or the polar plunge. Um, other than that, I wanna wish everyone a very merry Christmas.
Um, I'm gonna take a little bit of time, but, you know, I usually don't take up a lot of time. Like Tom, I've been a little reflective on, you know, the time I spent on city council. Yeah, I calculated it and I spent close to twenty percent of my adult life on Trinidad City Council. And, you know, when I look back on my life and I think of, it's not, the things I'm proudest of aren't necessarily the deals I've closed or the houses I've owned or the cars I've driven. It's public service. I learned a lot. It's a very humbling experience. You think, okay, all you gotta do is be a, a good business person. And you come in, well, the problem is, you know, business people drive cars like they've got, you know, they can make a move. You know, it's really hard in the municipal environment when you've got, you know, six, you know, colleagues. You've got a diverse staff and you've got a lot of competing interests and you've got a very diverse population who all want sometimes something very, very different. And I just wanted to say I found it extremely rewarding. And I want to thank all of staff, uh, Mike, Audra, Donna, Georgie, Cheryl, Tom, um, I'm sure I'm missing a few, Victor, Desiree, Brittany, and Les. And, uh, it's meant a lot to me. I just want to say a couple of things about, I think, fellow city council people. Joe, other than marijuana, I don't think I can count on one hand the things we've disagreed about in eight years. And they've typically been just matters of judgment. I could see your point of view. I'm sure you can see my point of view. Um, in any case, I really admire your dedication to the city and particularly the city workers. You know, that's just been a consistent part of your viewpoint towards what policy should be up here. And also, of course, I admire your work for autism. Yeah, I've learned a little bit through your eyes and Mary Jo's, how devastating this stuff is for a small community like this that doesn't really have the resources of a Pueblo color or springs. I also learned that you're a good gentleman. We took a trip together up to Pueblo for a benefit. And, uh, I also learned that you tell pretty good jokes. Do you know, I want to thank you. Very good jokes. Okay, Rusty, um, I really appreciate how outspoken you are. You don't miss words, ever. I also appreciate the planning and zoning perspective that you brought to council, because that's a very specific knowledge. Land use is not something I'm particularly good at. You know, I know, uh, there've been a number of times when I've learned from you, uh, in your experience. I think we're lucky to have someone as hardworking as dedicated as you. I, I mean, I'll just cite a few examples. You know, council had to work with planning and zoning on the comprehensive plan. Now, that's something nobody wants to do. We do it, we're supposed to do it under ten years and nobody ever wants to tackle that. That was a ton of work. And you were clearly in a leadership position on, on the discussions on those items. Um, I also want to applaud you for your work on the CIP. I mean, you really carried, carried the water on that one. You had some people helping you out. But you, you drove that process and it was successful. And I guess I also want to just thank you for doing all of this in the face of all of the health issues you faced this year, both you and Michelle. So, um, thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Phil, I'm gonna go right down the line, okay? Phil, I was a little skeptical when you first ran for mayor. I just, you know, because I'd learned so much in city council, I, I couldn't imagine being mayor before I sort of a term on city council. And, but you jumped right in. You won by a, it was a considerable margin, I remember, you always have. Um, but you've been the Energizer Bunny of mayors. I really, you know, I don't need to be cute about that. He proved me wrong in spades. And I just really respect the work that you've done representing Trinidad, both within Trinidad, outside of Trinidad, and especially up north, because you made a huge difference in our presence up north. And you've made connections with a few prior mayors and, uh, so thank you.
Thank you. We're missing you.
It was a pleasure, yeah.
Yeah.
Carlos, um, you're the only person on the dais that doesn't have a break here. No, I, I say that, yes, but, um, I think your youth and enthusiasm, you know, even though you're, you're a man, but compared to us, full farts, I mean, you're breath of fresh air. And, uh, I really wish you well in higher office. I think, again, that's gonna do Trinidad good. Because you'll always have a little bit of Trinidad perspective in your heart and you'll always keep us informed as to what's going on that affects us. And it makes a difference. I wish you, um, lots of luck in your marriage. I wish you, uh, a bunch of children and grandchildren. It's stuff I never had, but I think you're young enough to have them, so. Carlos, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it very much. Karen, um, I, you know, I thought just thinking things, but I think your attention to detail and you, you watch city money like a hawk. You know, it's like we're all like, sort of like looking at the same, you go, well, wait a minute, wait a minute. We take the thirty-seven percent and then you divide it by four going forward, but we're behind. And I admire that, your sense of risk, I mean, the fact that you're, uh, in the insurance business and have it for many, many years. Uh, that expertise is tremendous. And I think it also reflects in your appreciation for when you should take risks and when you shouldn't, because that's what insurance is all about. I also admire, and I don't know how to quite say this nicely, so I'll just say it, but, no. You know, times when someone's age, but you took on city council at a time when most people would be looking to slow down, certainly me. And I know it's a lot of work for you and you've, you've had some problems with your, with your feet especially and, uh, in your knees. So, you know, to do that, I, I'm not sure I could, you know, so, thank you, Karen. Let me come and give you a kiss. I admire, but I do appreciate your counsel. Thank you so much. And Anthony. You're an eloquent statesman and diplomat. I mean, I sometimes marvel at, at the things that you do together. And you're very, very disciplined about it. You write it down, but you really speak from the heart when you do. Um, I appreciate your law enforcement perspective. Um, we may have disagreed on one or two things. I'm not sure, I can't even remember any time we voted against each other. But I've always deferred to you on matters of law enforcement, because I know you lived and breathed that stuff. Now, repeat what Tom said, he's coming around to marijuana. It was a big deal and it's really, I think it made a big difference. And, uh, because we had a difficult time with, um, I mean, it was a very split council at that time. And I also want to say, I wouldn't be here if it weren't for you. I remember my friend, Bernadette was being elevated to mayor and there was an open city council seat that they weren't gonna do an election for, but it was gonna be you do a dog and pony show in front of council when they select. And Steve said, I said, oh, I, you know, and I hadn't been here a lot, you know. He goes, go talk to Anthony, my friend over at the courthouse. I guess you guys used to commiserate about things from time to time. And, uh, so I did and he looked at me and asked a little bit, and he said, well, why not? And it was wonderful. It's really all I needed. And then when that short unfinished term was over, then we ended up running together. And it was, you know, Mate and Miles, Miles and Mate. And you had the foresight, and I always admired it, to say that we want the best of, you know, sort of experience and sense of history and new ideas. And so I want to thank you for expressing confidence. I mean, you gave me the Trinidad walk. No, he took my. Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna miss you guys. And that's really, I got some other things going on with Chaffo, but that's fine. You know, I just wanted to say. And Tom, again, thank you for your service and getting the word out to people.
Well, that's a tough one to follow. But I will get to some business first. Um, Mike and I went to an ARBA board meeting recently. Uh, we dealt with some financial reports and the gist of it that I took away from it, just because I'm still kind of a fledgling member, is things are looking good. Um, right now, they're working on an annual review of the wholesale rate review. Uh, there was a resolution that was approved on that matter. The operating report is looking good, but they do have some, uh, eyes on a concern for Senate Bill nineteen dash nine oh six. So that is something we're gonna be keeping our eyes on to see how that goes through here in the future. So as more comes forward, I will be bringing that to you guys still in the future, even though I won't be on the dais. And to, to you gentlemen back there as well, the new council members elect, uh, we'll keep you apprised of everything as we learn about it. Um, we did give a public employee four fifty-seven deferred compensation plan incentive, which is a six percent matching, which was approved. There was a little bit of contention from some board members, but we felt that since there's only three staff members, it's not like you're diversifying it over like a hundred and fifty employees like we do here. So we felt we wanted to keep good employees happy with pensions and benefits that would, uh, keep them happy and keep them in those roles. So those were the major takeaways I had from that last meeting. Um, secondly, uh, I know we have some, uh, boards that are thin, especially the urban forestry board. So again, I want to reach out to everyone out there. If you know of any other people, we need more board members out there to help continue on this board, as I feel it's viable for the aesthetics and, um, well, just the arborian growth of our community. And we want to make sure, we just don't have trees that were planted during the WPA days that are gone and nothing to replenish them for the future. So, uh, please keep that in mind if you know of anybody. Uh, lastly, I will say, I got married last weekend, which was pretty sweet. I'm pretty happy.
That should have been personal.
Yeah. Well, we gotta talk about business. This is not personal. But anyway, thank you. It was really nice and, uh, very happy and we're gonna be honeymooning next month. But in the meantime, uh, I'm, I'm very honored and thankful to have worked with all of you and, and, you know, we don't always agree on everything and staff tries to help implement our policies that we give to them, but it, it's challenging and, and I, I love every minute of it. I'm not gonna lie. I, I, I commend all of you for helping me grow as a human and as a, uh, hopeful statesperson. And, um, we'll see what happens in the future. I mean, still got another challenge ahead of me, but you know me, I'm always tenacious. When I want something, I go after it, no matter how it is, as long as it's legal and ethical.
Go down on them.
Yeah. You know, but I, I really do appreciate the time and I, I'm looking forward to seeing what the future council members are going to do in our stead while we're gone, because we have to pass the baton at some point. And I think, uh, Trinidad is in a better place than it was when I got here in this position and that's the only way I can look at life. Give it back better the way you found it, or than the way you found it. So, uh, thank you and thank you to the city of Trinidad.
Like, you know, this whole process of changing the city council people for us that are remaining is a very bittersweet. Um, it's very bittersweet for us because I've come to know you three very well. And it's very interesting what Michelle said about public service, because it is very different than being in the private sector. Because the only person you have to answer for is your pocketbook, where you're in business for yourself. And when you're in municipal or any kind of government, you have a lot of people to answer to. And I want to thank all three of you for your dedication. I think the past two and a half year, two years I've been here, I can't remember how many times you guys, you very rarely missed a meeting. And that's dedication I want to thank you for that. And I also wanted to give the, now, I have the mic. Thank you, Garrett. For, I went to the chamber luncheon, the Christmas luncheon, and the choir sang at the luncheon. It was very nice. But then, I Thursday night, I went to Holy Trinity and Garrett and the choir had, um, nine lessons and carols program. It was very touching. A lot of work, Garrett, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I also want to wish everybody a happy, happy holidays to you all.
Thank you. When you go second to last, all the good stuff is everybody taking.
You gotta touch to that guy last night.
You always start so bad.
I have really spiffy stuff that everybody already said. But be that as it may, here we go. Carlos, uh, it's been a joy. I eager ambition. I mean, you just take off, you look for those out of control ground rockets on Fourth of July. You're just spinning in all kinds of directions. You bring things to fruition, the youth club. Okay, you were afraid to tackle big subjects and bring possible solutions, home resources and the things. You, you are destined for greater things and I'm happy to have known you and to have worked with you. The years that I've been around you, you've made yourself available to see it now. You've chosen to personally educate you, professionally educate yourself so that you can be better at what you do and it's quite obvious. You're very skilled at what you do and good luck to you in the future and everything. I'm glad to be here with you. And plus, you're kind of a snappy dresser. Take a lesson, huh? Except for the bow ties. The bow ties remind me of Judge Murray and Walsworth, but that's a whole other story for a different day.
Don't drag me into it.
I got you. Mr. Benado.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Mr. Benado, I, like everyone else has commented, I, uh, stubborn comes to mind. But I, I admire your sticktuitiveness, how grounded you are to your principles and your, and your beliefs. And, and sometimes I wonder, great frustration. And I, you've gotta be color breasts, no doubt about it.
My mama was.
And then I was driving home from Pueblo today and I was thinking about this and what I would say. When it came time, I said I wanted to report in the city council on three items. Little did I know everybody else was already doing the same thing. But here I am. I'm driving home from Pueblo and I thought, worse than that, he's from Sopras. Those people never give up. They never give up. Frank Seram used to have Sopras Colorado on his truck.
That's right.
Okay? And if it weren't for term limit. And if it weren't for term limits, I think you would give my friend, Gabor and Bob Holger, a run for a longevity, but he trusts me, and it would be well deserved. It's been a pleasure, joy, and again, I admire your sticktuitiveness. Okay? Michelle, you and I, and you said, we ran together, I remember targeting a pumpkin, because it was at Halloween, M and N, and I remember buying little bags of M and Ms, Potato Miles, and handed out M and M kinds of stuff, and it was a good thing. But let me begin by saying, but when people ask me, said, who is, I gotta talk slower, who is Michelle Miles? I said, well, she's new, she's from New York. And you are the newbie, the transplant that scares the hell out of us. We were always, well, new people come and they want to change things. But when you came, you brought the full measure of a Wall Street experience, your knowledge, just everything that you are. You were able to, I believe, and I've never been to a meeting, well, the one, couple here, get ARBA off of being high center, so that something can happen for everyone's benefit. And like you defer to me, whenever there was a presentation that involved money or finances, whatever Michelle says, I second. I will always defer to an MBA from Stanford. Okay? And again, it has been my pleasure to know you and to work with you, and good luck to you in the future. I bet you once, a well deserved ride out in the sunset, right? And you told me you wanted to travel. You wanted to do something.
Yeah, we're good for you.
And did I get everything included?
Yeah.
You brought a big hammer, and you got us some momentum. And I think collectively, there's a cohesiveness that causes some direction and some forward momentum. We always sat on our morals, morals, historical or otherwise, and waited for something to come and follow in our laps. Luck is where preparation meets opportunity. And Phil has done a lot to make us lucky, as we all have. We have prepared ourselves, so that when opportunity presented itself, I remember when it was first suggested, we should buy Fisher's Peak, I said, what? And those guys stopped here that night, and they had this presentation, I even commented and showed my stupidity, they said, it's like watching the Charlie Brown cartoons, you guys are talking, it's like when the adults talk, wah, 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 wah. It was so foreign to me. But you saw the benefit of that, and you saw the advantage to doing that. And again, I thank you all.
I was a skeptic.
Don't drag me along. Okay, thank you very much, all of you, and I do appreciate having been in a position to serve with you. Good luck.
I didn't know we were supposed to give a outgoing speech or nothing. That's why I was.
But here we go.
Here we go, yeah, here we go. I'll only keep you a minute. I just want to say one thing, is that, you know, I love this town. That's one thing I always have in my heart, this town. And I want to see it grow, and I want to see it prosper. I want to see this council, whoever take, the new council members that seat up here, and the council members that are up here, put the pedals to the metal and keep going forward. It's been a, you know, sometimes it was a hard drive, sometimes it was an easy drive for me. But if I look back onto it now, I think I'd do it all over again, I really would. I just want to say one more thing, there's a person in here that, in all my years that I served on this council, has always, I always addressed term or anything, what time of, what time was the meeting, is there a special meeting, do I have to go to the Holiday Inn, and that's Audrey. And I'll never forget that, Audrey, you've always been on my side, and I'm not saying anybody else can take care of me, but Audrey was there, was the first one I always called. And she was there, and she always told me, yeah, we gotta do that, no, we don't have no money, because this thing here, you know, Aaron, I wish you a lot of luck, because I don't like it. And just one other thing I'd just like to say is that, to the new council members, probably not to Mr. Schu, because he served, but I always remember one thing, when you vote, you vote with your heart. You vote with this that's pumped in there and saying, this is the way I feel. The majority of the vote isn't always proper vote, that's what I learned. But, one other thing I'd just say is just, you know, put your best foot forward, Aaron, I'm proud of you, Frank, I doubt with you, you should all be, I wish you guys the best of luck. And thank Tom, what a speech, man. What a, you know, Uncle Joe in heaven. You know, thank you so much, Tom. Thank you, Mr. Bernado.
Can I just one more thought? Just that, and I didn't say that, I named a bunch of names, but then I got more eloquent with the others. The one thing I want to say to you all, and it echoes some of what Joe said, is you make us look good.
That's right.
And you're prepared, you answer questions, it's usually within, you know, an hour, you're available to sit down. You all make us look good, and don't forget that, and how much it's appreciated. Okay, so Mike, and I'm going to reserve my comments for the night for the next meeting, because that is the final meeting, that you guys are gonna be here, and I'm going to have some stuff, and I'll talk live. I'll reserve my comments until last night, because that's the last meeting that you guys will be in, so I appreciate everything you guys have done.
Thank you.
Any other reports yet?
From, I didn't go to the CML meeting.
Right. None of them? Okay. Well, I'm going to go ahead and report on a few things here. Ross, you already commented about the Landa Fort Carson bill, I was interested to do. Last Saturday night, the C U of the community was here, and there was a group of students that went up to Fisher's Peak, and they've done some work for, and then, what's it really looking like, is there some duplication being happening, is there coming down studying Fisher's Peak, there's other groups that are, another group or two that have been doing it. But C U of the community, they did a nice presentation, they asked me to be there too, so, but it was nice to hear from them. Last Friday, the Trinidad-Los Angeles County Forum Group met, that was our third meeting. It was very interesting with that meeting, because the whole idea was, okay, what does the county need, you know, and they pulled together, you know, several different people in the community, and we had three meetings, two, about three meetings now. But what's been happening is that each time that we have met, the number one thing that arises to the top has been education. So, we did, they, so what the group decided to do was to ask the school districts to come to a meeting, as well as Dr. Ripper from the college. So, we met last week, and last Friday, and it was a very interesting, interesting meeting as to what, what's working for the school districts, what their challenges are, how the college could maybe help integrate with what they're doing within the school districts. And after the meeting was over, there might be another upcoming meeting with the school district to kind of go over some additional stuff. Like, it was a very interesting meeting to have, because everybody sees the advantages of, education is the big thing, I don't care if it's K through twelve, I don't care if it's adults, we're always learning, that's what we're even being, so we're constantly learning. So, anyway, I just want to let you guys know that we're working on that. Went to the Southwest Chief in Denver meeting, no, actually, I did go to that, but I called in. Something that's happening, and I will be bringing this forward to you, because what's happened, we're doing is, we're trying to put together, there's some talk about, trying to put together a passenger rail authority. And what that'll happen, what'll happen there is there might be some taxation that may come back to everybody along I twenty-five, could be even I seventy, and a way to fund rail transportation. Everybody realizes that, even with what's happening between Colorado Springs and Fort and up north, that is, by now, that is already outdated. And you guys travel up there, and you see how much traffic there is. And right now, I see it all the time, because as much as I go up there, and that's already outdated, so there needs to be an additional mode of transportation, but then again, we're fighting against Richard Anderson and Chairman Chow, or Chairwoman Chow from the US Department of Transportation, because they want to shift all the money to the East Coast. So, we're trying to figure out a way to continue that passenger rail service, you know, from Chicago through here, and also extend that service all the way up to Fort Collins and possibly up to Cheyenne, Wyoming. We know that's going to be a long range plan from here up there, but the big thing is, is we, our charge per the Senate bill is to work on the Southwest Chief, which is what we're talking about here, what we're talking about. But then also, the second, the second charge is the portion from Trinidad all the way up north to Fort Collins. So, there's two charges within that Senate bill. So, that's the thing that we need to make sure, we keep our eye on the wall to make sure that this passenger rail continues to live, because we know that the growth that's coming to the state of Colorado, additional transportation is going to be, is going to be really, really bad. So, anyway, just want to let you know, and I will be bringing a proposal to see if everyone agrees here, and probably near the next month or two, because it's probably going to have to go out to the, to the public for, as a, in legislation.
Like a tax?
It's gonna have to be like a tax, a possible tax to fund this. So, that may be coming, you know, and probably, we're going to try to get it on in 2020, but I doubt if that's gonna happen, it's probably gonna happen in 2020. But I will be also taking that to the South Central Council governments in the future, and let you guys, and kind of give you a complete update of everything that's been going on.
Will they continue to keep it as a rail, or do a light rail, or a high-speed rail?
Well, the speed of the train they're gonna try to get is between seventy to ninety miles an hour, that's what the, what they're gonna have to be. Because right now, I think the maximum is about fifty-five mile, about fifty miles an hour right now. So, the rails are being replaced in the area right now, they've not done this particular section, but they've done down in Tulane, they've done some between Los Angeles and Kansas, and around Llanan. So, they've updated the rail system in there, so it'll rotate, I think, those speeds, but it all has to be changed. I went to the tourism gathering that they had, where it was a Christmas gathering, and the rest of you were there.
I was.
And it was kind of nice, they honored the people that work at the, work at the Welcome Center.
Wow.
And some of those people had a lot of hours, what, eight or nine thousand hours?
Eight, over, three people have over eight thousand volunteer hours, three people. Wow, that's, that's what I said, I was like, wow.
They put a lot of time into that, I'll tell you that. One thing, I attended the CML meeting in Denver a couple of weeks ago, just wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention that are of interest, and of course, you people that are going off on, off of council, but new people are coming on, but still, you people will probably be, probably see this. One is the criminal justice substance abuse disorder treatment in the justice system. There's a bill that is going to be going forward, that somebody that has substance abuse in, and they're in jail, that they need to provide assistance to these people. Unfortunately, the way the bill is written right now, it's unfunded, it's going to be an unfunded mandate, so it's going to fall back on the city or the county to make sure that these people have the drug zero or whatever, to make sure that they can, that's from what I gather. So, right now, CML is opposing it, unless it's amended. So, they've got to do some work on that, so there's some major work that's gotta, gotta happen. The other one is the employment and labor, which is discriminatory employment practices. This increases the exposure of municipalities and other employers to claims, including extending the statute of limitations for filing complaints, substantially lowering the bar on what may be considered a hostile working environment. So, that one's going to be another one that's they're opposing unless amended. They're talking about repealing the sales tax exemption for long-term lodging, so that's something that's they're going to be bringing. This one was kind of weird, I never knew it even existed. But currently, surplus military vehicles that are used for off-highway use for firefighting, if they travel through town, that's illegal activity right now. So, if they want, they want to change that to where they can use it on highways. It doesn't make sense, but that's. And again, they're talking about, this is totally different, this from the legislation side, transportation planning organization authority to act as a regional transportation authority. The PFAS bill, which is all of the substances that the firefighters use in their equipment, how it can enter into the environment, and they want to try to work on doing something with that. Just informations, items that they gave us, building inspections, they've kind of backed off, I believe, for the timeframe, for the timeframe, Mike, about what they're planning on doing with the journeyman people, so they're working on that. So, they're going to fulfill the 2020 session, but it may be 2021. Another criminal justice item that may be coming is police reform of legislation. The subjects would be the legal standards governing the lawful use of law enforcement officers, independent citizen oversight of their internal police investigation, the question of whether criminal investigations into police behavior should be delegated to someone other than local district attorney and release of body cam videos. They're talking about recall, election cleanup. What they're stating there is, bill is very unclear, and right now, what they want to do is they're saying that if someone is recalled, and there's like six months before they're reelected, that they're, that recall cannot go forward. So, that's one of the items in the cleanup bill that they're talking about. They're still talking about the FM ALAs, which are the family and medical leave insurance thing, so that's, I think they still have a long ways to go with that. Fire and pension police, that's something we just went through, but I think we're kind of taking care of it because of what we're doing ourselves. They're also talking about age restriction on vaping, which I think that may be something we need, I think, because there, a lot of areas are talking about going to twenty, age of twenty-one instead of eighteen. And others that are, and they're talking about federal legislation now.
Cigarettes and vaping, both twenty-one.
And, just, so Mike, I'm not sure, did we address the water conservation in our comprehensive plan, and you know that's in there?
There definitely wa, water on that, in the comprehensive plan, you can check.
Because that's something that they want, they're tackling as well. So, those are the items that they're bringing forward, and like I said, they've got another final meeting, I think, in late January, February, that they'll have, they'll compile all of the legislation that'll be coming forward. Let's see if there's anything else. Just wanted to mention to you that when the new council comes on board, I'm going to recommend that we have a retreat for council, probably in February, so I think it'd be nice to, just a good time to sit down, to talk and get to know one another.
Why?
Sure, why not? Also, another thing I want to mention, and we'll start working on that, is the last couple of years, I've had a state of the community address, and that's something I also want to work on, begin to work on, to let the community know where we're at. With that, Mike, do you want to talk about the Action Twenty-two?
Oh, sure, sure.
Oh, before I forget that, I've got that address for that, remember I mentioned to you last one, about the, about the TYC?
Oh, the job or youth court?
No, the TYC, that there's a, the TYC in Colorado Springs, I've left that address for you.
The YMCA.
Oh, thank you.
I've got that address for you, if you want to take it.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike.
Well, thank you. Appreciate all the comments, it's been great working with everybody all alone, so, good and bad, but. The Action Twenty-two, we really need to kind of move on getting our reservations for those that want to go. I don't know if anybody who went last year wants to speak to it, I mean, January twenty-third, there's, you actually go to the governor's mansion, they don't have quite an agenda but, yet, but January twenty-third and twenty-fourth, we need to get our reservations, registrations in, it's fifty dollars if we get it early, otherwise, it's gonna be, it's gonna go up. Dana has offered the Oxford and Crawford hotels at a reduced rate for those that want to attend, so, there's some issues, she really, Debbie really wants to schedule some times with legislators, so that you can talk on issues like Fisher's Peak, highway funding, the joint budget committee on how they're gonna fund and the capital development can the capital development committee. She's going, she wants to schedule all these meetings so that council can, can meet with these legislators and give input. So we need to either contact Audra or Brittany so that we can get a list of who's going to go again. That's January 23rd, 24th. No agenda yet, but if, if you plan on attending.
Yes.
I plan on attending.
I plan on.
Because I think on Friday, I actually have a Southwest Chief meeting as well, but on Friday anyhow. So I plan on being there.
I got Phil and Rusty, anybody else that, uh...
The councilwoman elect, Ohla Tree, said that she was definitely interested.
Sure.
I don't know about Mr. Schu. I think Mr. Williamson already left, but...
We'll reach out to, to them.
Santa Claus, man.
Yeah. And also, so for our work sessions, I know we had January 13th out for possible code development review, that big old thick document that scared everybody the last time out. We're trying to get some red lines together. While we talked to the, to Carrie McColl from McColl and Associates, she's actually in Mexico. She's taking vacation at that time. So we kind of moved it to maybe January 27th, but in discussion with Audra, she scheduled surcertrings for new and, and existing council people. So on the January 27th, uh, work session. So we're, uh, we're looking at scheduling something on the 13th. I don't know if council has any suggestions now or wants to get them to me. We've got a few ideas. There's, um, some, some issues with marijuana funding, possibly fourth quarter. I don't know if we'll be ready for that then or not, but, uh, we need to discuss the policy on moving forward, on dispersing those funds, because it's, uh... Getting a lot of people coming at me from a lot of directions wanting, wanting some of that money. And so I want to get council's direction on policies and how that goes and what we bring for you. So, um, other than that, Merry Christmas, happy New Year.
Thank you. Take you as well.
Yes. Mayor, council members, thank you. The one item of business I, I want to mention is that, um, the new council, we need to have a discussion about marijuana businesses and how they are now legally, they can be publicly owned. And what we are going to do in terms of vetting, um, owners, owners slash operators of marijuana businesses. And we actually, before we had a rewriting of the code, we used to have a requirement that anyone who was a 10%, I think it may have been 5%. We could actually have a stricter or a more stringent requirement than what the state requires. But we had a requirement that anyone who had a certain percentage ownership in marijuana businesses had to be vetted. And so anyway, I think we need to come up with a policy, um, you know, through ordinances regarding how we're going to do this and who is going to be responsible for marijuana businesses, especially when you now could have, like if you had a rule that said anyone who was a 10% owner and above, you could have a whole bunch of people who had a 9% ownership interest, and then one person who would make up the difference. And so nobody would have to be vetted. Nobody would have to have, you know, background checks or, or anything of that nature. And, um, one of the things I think is very important is to have, you know, somebody who is a, a owner-operator, who is going to be obviously responsible for the, the day-to-day operations, but that individual, or those individuals are not necessarily also owners of, of the marijuana businesses. So I would bring that to your attention. I know we have a lot of, um, items to talk about for, for work sessions. That's the only item of business. I don't mean to act like I'm one of all of you, like I sometimes do, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make, not make statements, um, to each of you of, of the outgoing council members. And so please indulge me for, for just a moment, if you would. Councilman Benato, Tom said it far better than I could, but truly, this is the end of an era. And, you know, we've had a number of Councilman Benato eras, um, you know, here, but it is truly the end of an era. And, um, as I was thinking about this, not many council members have a real identifiable constituency, like people that, that they have a voice for always. And people do with you. And someone mentioned, um, earlier, the, the city workers. And I would say, you know, working people everywhere, not just the city workers. Union members, I mean, that kind of whole grouping of people you have always been a very strong voice for. The elderly. Autism. Yes, the anti-marijuana demographic. I mean, you know, I, but in, in water, oh my God, water, whoever, you know? Anyway, all those things. And I want to say that you and I have locked horns on many occasions. And if you had asked me, you know, six years ago, how do you suppose it's going to end with Councilman Benato? I probably would have said, not well. You and I have had kind of public arguments. And, um, truly, nothing but respect. Again, Tom said it far better than I could. And you, you are always a forceful voice. You never have wavered. You never, you never change your stripes, man. You can be in a crowd of different people and you're still going to get the same Joe Benato. You're still going to get the same person in one crowd you would, you would have in another. So thank you for your service and, um, thank you for indulging me and, and, you know, for, for always listening. You always listen, and I appreciate that very much. Councilwoman Miles, you know, one of the first things I did as city attorney was we had the vote, what you referred to earlier, the, the council members of the time, the vote that was kind of a process of elimination, to have you become the, the council person that, that filled that seat. And, and, and that was really a lot of fun. And I don't say that very often, but I remember it like it was yesterday. I don't, you know, I don't really remember how well I knew you seven years ago, but, uh, but I know I knew you. I was very excited for that. And, and I just want to say more than anything, what an asset you have been. I'm not, I'm going to try to not drop any F-bombs, you know, here and there. But just what a freaking asset you have been. And a lot of the newer council members don't remember the ARPA litigation that we had, and that you navigated us through those dicey waters far better than, you know, the best city attorney ever could have. You were, um, you were always hands-on. You told everybody what to do. You, you knew that inside and out. And my God, the amount of money we spent on the ARPA litigation, and are very capable lawyers. But we had them and we had you. And on all contracts, I mean, I don't really, you know, like force majeure clauses and severability. When I first started, you schooled me on contracts. And I know things now that I, I never knew. It was because of you and, and the tremendous work you have done. And, and really, the Stanford MBA. I mean, what an, an asset you have been for the city and on the city council. Councilman Lopez. I, uh, you know, I'm, I'm kind of glad that nobody mentioned this, so it was kind of, you know, safe for me. But that is, um, the youth club. I mean, what an incredible thing that you have given to the community. And, you know, that you, you almost single-handedly, when you first started advocating for a youth club or a Boys and Girls Club in Trinidad, I didn't, you know, and I'm not even very familiar with them now, but I didn't really know what they were, what they consisted of. You just picked up that whole, you know, that ball and you ran with it. And you ensured there was funding for it. You did everything you needed to do to get the support on, on council. And now I'm, I'm a bit more aware of what, you know, Boys and, and Girls Clubs or Youth Clubs do. And what a huge asset that has been for this community. And that really should almost be called the, uh, the Carlos Lopez, you know, Youth Club in the city of Trinidad, because again, single-handedly, and that is kind of your, um, that is your legacy. And I, you know, there are a lot of things I could say about you that are very positive, that are, you know... But, but that, I think, speaks volumes about what you've done. You could be on city council for a long time and not have anything tangible really to show. And, and you would have done that even if you had not been a council member, if you had not been a council member. But it enabled you to have the, the vehicle in order to, uh, to do that and to get that accomplished and to have that done. So kudos to you, you know, kudos to all of you. And I, I just want to say kind of in conclusion, um, I am, I am saddened by those of you who are leaving, but I am relieved for those of you who are staying. And I'm excited for those who are coming on. So thank you. Thank you. That's right. That's all I have there.
Okay. And on that done, on item 11, executive session, for conference with the city's attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice, on specific legal questions under CRS section 24-6-02 for B, application of municipal code and binding legal issues. Motion to go into executive session?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All wrote?
Benato?
Yes.
Scuttle?
Yes.
Drago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes. Yes. Let's take a break.